Good afternoon today, it's Monday, December the 14th, and the McDowell County Board of Commissioners are in session at this time. We'll call the meeting to order, and we would ask everyone to please stand as we do our prayer, and we have our pledge of flag. Commissioner Brown, would you do our pissing of prayer?
Our Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for all of your many blessings, and we thank you for Christmas, and we thank you for the Christmas period. We thank you, Father, for the true meaning of Christmas, and for the birth of your son that came and gave his life for us. And Father, we ask you that you'd be with us in this meeting tonight. We pray that thy will would be done in our lives, first of all, and God that you would help us to do what is right for this community and this nation, God, as well. Father, that we would always uplift thee before our nation, and for our community, and let people know that there is a God, and there is a reality in serving thee. Help us in every endeavor, and we'll praise thy holy name. Amen.
Let's all face the flag, come to attention, handle the heart, recite it long as may. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in invisible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. This time, let's go ahead and move to the approval of the minutes, previous minutes. What's the board?
Motion approved minutes.
Discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed, like sign. Thank you, gentlemen. Let's move to the next item, which is the approval of our agenda before us. We've had this in advance. What's the pleasure? Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
If I could point out maybe one addition that I've put on your computer, there is a sidearm and badge resolution that is on here. It's for a deputy that is retiring. It was sort of a last-minute thing that they asked us to bring before you tonight. That is on your computer.
Okay.
I make a motion, we accept the agenda.
Okay, discussion. Would that be under new business?
Well, we can do it under the administrative items.
Okay, all right. That's where we'll do it at. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed, like sign. Okay. At this time, we will move to item A on our appointment schedule. Every December, we choose a new, or choose a chairman and a vice chairman. So, as standard operating procedure, I will now turn the meeting over to our clerk. Madam Clerk, the meeting is yours.
Thank you. I will now take nominations for chair.
I would nominate David Walker to continue as chair.
Are there any other nominations? If not, I'll entertain a motion to cease the nominations.
Motion nomination cease.
Have a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of Commissioner Walker as chair, please raise your hand. I will now take nominations for vice chair.
Make a motion, we nominate Barry McPeters.
Are there any other nominations? I'll entertain a motion to cease nominations.
Make a motion to cease nominations.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, and now turn the meeting back over to you, Chairman.
Thank you, gentlemen. I want our clerk to make a comment real quick. You know, choosing the chairman and vice chairman, we've got a really great board. For anybody who's listening to me tonight and watching this meeting, our board works very well together, and we've got a great group of guys who want to seek to do what's best for our community and our county. And, but I do want our clerk to comment, and our county manager, we, I was in the office the other day, and some of you guys may have heard this tale, though, but a county, what county was it, voted 241 times on the selection of the chairman and vice chairman?
Forty-one times.
In Avery County.
Avery County voted 240?
Just 41.
Oh, 41 times?
Two hours.
Two hours, okay.
That's worth the praise.
So...
It might have gone on 241 times, if someone hadn't have dropped out, based on what we heard, but...
But that just shows again how well our board works together. And, gentlemen, I appreciate you and the job you do, because this is a, it's a team. There's no I in team. We're a group of men working together for the good of the people, and I want you guys to know publicly that I appreciate what you guys do, and day in, day out, to make the lives of the people in McDowell County better. So, I appreciate you. Barry, anything you want to add?
Just want to say thank you once again, and it's been a privilege to be able to serve last year as vice chairman, and this coming year. It's always, just like David said, it's a good working board. I've noticed that there's times we've had divisions, since I've been on the board, but we've always seemed to get along, and we're here to do the business of the county, and I appreciate your vote of confidence one more time. Thank you, gentlemen.
One of the things that, you know, stands out to me is, we all have like, the personal likes and dislikes.
Yep.
But what it really comes down to with our board, what is the best for the taxpayers in this county?
Exactly.
Majority of the taxpayers.
It's well said, Rain.
I believe that, you know, as a board, we make decisions based on that, and not on our personal little likes and dislikes.
Right.
True. Okay, let's move to item V on our appointment schedule tonight. This is the administrative items and budget update. With the addition of the granting of the service weapon, Mr. Abernathy, go ahead, sir, and lead us out. I mean, Abernathy. And I was trying real hard to say Wooten. Mr. Wooten, for those who are watching, 28 years was the term of our tenure of our previous county manager, and Mr. Wooten has been here 11 years as the assistant, and now he's assumed the mantle of the county manager. So, Ashley, I do apologize to you.
No, I don't take it as offense. I've been called a lot worse.
A lot better.
I should mention that Chuck will be here later on for another item.
Mr. Wooten will be here later on? Okay.
I will go ahead with our administrative items. We try to group a lot of these fairly routine items together, but, you know, not to rush anything through, but it just makes sense to do it that way. And typically, we've done a brief budget overview before we get into those items, and every month, we put in the budget update, we put in a summary of where the departments stand at this point in the year, as well as sales tax collections, property tax collections. And at any time, if you have any questions about what is in there, please feel free to give me a call, email, text, what have you. If I don't know the answer, we'll get an answer to you very quickly. But, for the most part, sales tax is a little bit better than it was last month, so we'll continue to keep an eye on that, and pray for good things there. Still is down from where we would hope, but it's a little bit, little bit better. And there is some guidance from Association of County Commissioners in your packet about that as well, if you wanted to read that and dive into it. Any questions about where we are in the budget year? We are halfway through, and it seems to, as far as, you know, we can tell, everything is proceeding as planned. We've had some unexpected things pop up in building maintenance and that sort of thing, and that's, you say it's unexpected, but you expect to have some major things go wrong during a year, but everything seems to be... There are any questions? We'll go ahead with our budget amendments. We've got three of those, and I'll ask Finance Officer Allison if she can go over those for us.
GF number 12 is for the Sheriff's Department. This is allocating reserve funds from last year. They financed a vehicle that didn't receive it in this year, so that's appropriating fund balance, and also appropriating inmate housing, which is basically to cover last year's purchase of a vehicle and this year's purchase of a vehicle. GF 13, emergency services. This is to allocate EMA reimbursements that have been received, and to transfer the budget within the line items. GF 14 is allocating technical reserve funds for the register of needs office. So much of her revenue is set aside to be carried forward each year to be used for various equipment needs or technology needs, and so she's received a, or purchased a new phone system.
Okay, gentlemen, you've heard the three budget amendments. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion approve GF 12 through 14 is presented.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye, and opposed, like sign. Okay, Mr. Wooten?
The next item is, comes up every once in a while, it's brought to us by our finance office. Again, we collect occupancy tax and remit it to the Tourism Development Authority, and every once in a while, we'll have folks that are well-meaning that may have an illness or have to be called out of town, that sort of thing, and they miss the payment deadlines for those. And we have two businesses that are listed in the memo that are requesting a waiver of the penalties for the late fee, and they're very good businesses, and this is a one-time thing, hopefully.
Any comments or questions? What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion approve the waiver of occupancy tax penalties.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye, and opposed, like sign. Okay, Mr. Wooten?
Moving right along. Had a call the other day from McDowell Mission. Apparently, they have been hauling in a pickup trash from their facilities down to the transfer station, and they had, apparently, have been given an informal waiver of tipping fees for their facilities, and we looked on the computer system, and there was never a formal approval, which our auditors don't like that much, and it's just probably not a good policy. So, they've been receiving that, apparently, for several years, but it was never entered appropriately. So, we would just ask that, if you're in favor of it, that you approve it, so we can carry that forward from here on out.
Comments, questions? There being none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve the waiver for the McDowell Mission.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye, and opposed, like sign. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
And the last item under this memo here, we'd receive a request from the sheriff's office. Deputy Steve Hensley is retiring, and as typical, when they have someone retire, they're asking that the board approve a resolution that is attached that would allow him to purchase his sidearm for a dollar, and it would also donate the badge to him.
Okay, comments, questions? Okay, there being none, what's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion, we approve a resolution to allow him to have the handgun.
Second. Okay, discussion? I'll just make one comment, that these officers serve, and my goodness, wouldn't it be a bad thing for somebody not to let them have their gun, or sell it back to them for a dollar? We appreciate, this board appreciates what law enforcement does, so Ashley, make sure to wait to Steve, which we'll see him out and about, but we appreciate the hard work he's done, his service. Great guy. Hope he enjoys retirement. All right, where we at, guys? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed, like sign.
Before we move on, thankfully, I have on top of it Finance Officer, I skipped over an item related to fixed assets. I could give a very 30,000-foot overview of it, or we could get an even better overview of it from Allison.
Jim, were you on with the 30,000 mile view, or the on-ground look?
You better get the detail from her.
We'll allow our Finance Officer to go right ahead.
Currently, we have a limit of $800 for fixed assets. What that means is that any piece of equipment that we purchase for over $800 comes up on our fixed asset system. The state requires that we report items that are over $5,000. So, we have from $800 to $5,000 that we are keeping on our records. And what we are requesting is that we are allowed to only have to keep up with those items that are $5,000 or more on our fixed assets. That will cut out a whole lot of record keeping, which is basically, any more computers will cost you $1,000. However, within a year, they're obsolete. So, then what Karen has to do is she has to go back into the fixed asset system and delete those items as they're disposed of.
And I would say, what, this would probably be standard operating practice in most counties, yeah, state.
Absolutely, absolutely. It doesn't mean that the department heads won't be responsible for knowing where that $1,000 computer system is.
Sure.
This is just getting our fixed asset system to equal what we are reporting in our audit report.
Is that 5,000 been, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, and maybe clarify, we would still have county manager approval for items, $800 and above?
Oh, absolutely. It doesn't change the purchase order limit. Purchase orders will still be issued for any item over $800.
Has that 5,000 been pretty standard throughout the years, or has it increased, or is it something?
$5,000 was gassed by 34, and that was put in place, I am thinking, five or six years ago. So, no, it hasn't...
It hasn't changed in that timeframe?
We put in your packet, I think there was about 10 counties, and it was just a sample from around that are doing the 5,000. And we did ask our auditor, and she did say that it was pretty consistent, that most entities were going to that level. It saves a ton of work for Karen and the other staff from, like Allison said, anything below that, it's really not worth keeping up with year after year.
Because it could be retroactive.
But it doesn't leave things untraceable, you know?
No, the department head is still responsible for making sure that their $1,000 items or $800, $300 items are still in place, and still being used for what the purpose was in the purchase.
I think it's good. On the letter from Karen, it's be fiscal year 2016, but it says beginning July 1st, 2015. Does that make it retroactive back? Good, so that'll help you for this year. Okay, good. I'm going to clarify that.
One other question. Would this change the, for us to depreciate something, it's going to 5,000, or it's stay at another number, versus expensive, versus depreciation versus expensing something?
Everything will be expensed.
Up to 5,000, yeah, okay. I got you.
This just helps them with their paperwork for an order. That's all it is.
Okay, any other comments, questions? There being none, what's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion that we increase the fixed assets limit to $5,000.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye, and opposed, like sign. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Let's move to our next item. We're actually a little ahead of schedule now. Let's go to item A under old business. This is the jail and courthouse project update. We've got about 10 minutes, Ashley, would that be sufficient before we knock that out?
Should be. Okay, just to give a general update on the two major projects that are going on with the jail and courthouse, there's been quite a bit of vertical construction at the jail. That project appears to be, knock on wood, appears to be proceeding without any additional issues. You know, we had the sewer issue that we addressed several months ago. That one's fairly straightforward. It's a 25-year-old building, not going to have a lot of issues there, and we haven't, but we found a few. But, you know, we're adding on the female side, and some juvenile dorms as well, and we're in constant communication with the sheriff and the chief, and seem to have a pretty good understanding of where that's going. So, again, knock on wood, that we don't encounter any more large issues between now and the completion date. Having said that, I think whenever we mentioned the courthouse project, we put out, the Stanton, Chuck is here, and would say that as well, it's an older building, and we sometimes uncover things that no we would find. Not so much been the case since last month. We've made quite a bit of progress in the elevator construction since then. There's been concrete that's been poured there, and, you know, we've had issues, you know, getting the concrete actually up to the pit. Not really issues, just more physics, but that has gone well. The holding cells are fairly complete for the male and the female holding cells. And as we go through, since we have contractors there, Terry showed me Friday one suggestion that he had made to the contractors to improve security up on the second level. So, we're trying to, you know, to take care of some issues while we have people there, and we can do it more efficiently. So, again, just to highlight some of the things we've done in the last couple of weeks in the courthouse. I mentioned the elevator base and pit, the walls have been poured. We've done some HVAC work for the holding cells. We have started on the sprinkler system for those holding cells, and looking forward, those are the two main projects regardless, but we're hoping to have those two items finished in February. Hope is maybe a strong word. And we can, you know, it's, the building is open, and people are working there, and we do our best to minimize any impacts, and we thank the contractor and architect and everyone else for their work to do that, and thank the staff that are working up there for putting up for the inconvenience. On a related note, Commissioner Brown, Chairman Walker, and I met with Judge Davis and Judge Poole about two weeks ago. We went over the work that's been going on with the elevator, security enhancements and so forth, and brought them up to speed with those projects. And we also just talked about some of the items, such as a third courtroom, parking deck improvements, HVAC, that we've done some initial work on, and just let them know that, you know, that's not been forgotten, that we have an architect engaged in the third courtroom, and we have an engineer engaged to work on the parking deck, design improvements, and other things, such as a fire alarm system, hot water in different rooms, that's where. But I think the point of the meeting was to just improve communication, which I think they appreciated. They appreciate, appreciated getting the information from us, and I believe from it, we will see possibly something like utility committee, like we have with the city, and the education committee with the college, and the school system. So, we're trying to work that out now with dates and meeting times and all that, but I think, looking forward, you'll see that constant communication. No intent to leave them out by any means, but we do want to make sure they're involved moving forward with discussions there in the building.
And I'll say too, Ashley, I appreciate you, your comments at the end about the meeting with the two judges, because this board needs to hear and understand exactly what we communicated back and forth, and Tony was there. Tony was there because of his contractor, many years in the contracting business, and Tony, just give us a little comments to the board, just, I know we talked, but just another comment, add to what Ashley said about the meeting.
Well, I think, you know, first of all, the, I think the judges probably were a little disappointed that they hadn't, of course, they'd been brought into the loop, you know, to understand what was going on and the progress that was being made. They didn't really understand the amount of progress we were making on it, and I think that after that meeting, I think it was a very positive meeting. I think it helped both parties, both the commission and the judge's judicial system as well, to understand where we're at and where we're going. We both have a common goal in mind, and I think that, I think we're going to work together and achieve it.
And I'll just add one sentence, that they were appreciative of the board, and the board, the work that we're doing, is just, they would like to see it more at an advanced pace, but we explained setbacks and the processes we have to undergo as bidding and that type of things, so, but a very good meeting, and they look forward to, as Ashley stated, the future meeting, maybe every two months, every once, once a quarter, maybe. They didn't get that ironed out, but, so they're excited about the continued dialogue concerning court activities and court facilities. Okay, let's go ahead and move to our next item, and this will be the reappointment of our tax assessor. We have Mr. Chad Phillips, who is our current tax assessor, with us tonight. Chad, if you don't mind coming to the podium, and Ashley, go ahead and lead us out on this topic?
Sure. I put in my memo, said, like many counties in North Carolina, the county has an appointed tax assessor. I'd say a very vast majority have an appointed assessor. Some counties have a combined tax administrator. I don't imagine there's any elected tax assessors, thankfully for you, but...
Maybe one or two.
But Mr. Phillips was appointed several years ago to fill the unexpired term of our prior assessor, Keith Renfro, and in that time, Mr. Phillips has completed his certification. He's done the continued education, that sort of thing, and done a very great job leading the department. But now's the sticky point for him and for you guys. It is an at-will position, and we would ask that you reappoint Chad, since he does have the experience, the certification, and the knowledge of the organization. You have the option of doing a minimum of two years or a maximum of four. We would recommend the four-year term, but again, that is up to you guys, and he's doing a great job, learning every day like the rest of us, but I don't see why he couldn't take us to the next level and help us through the next revale, too.
So, your recommendation is to reappoint at a four-year period, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Chad, anything you want to say before we go ahead and dive in, ask you a few questions, and vote?
I just appreciate what I've got to do so far, and I've enjoyed it. That's it.
Okay, that's good enough. Comments, questions by board members?
I guess one, one thing I could ask him over the past couple of years, in this position, is there any special achievements that you've accomplished that you're proud of, you'd like to share with us today?
Mostly the tag office, just how much better I think it's running now than it was whenever I first took over. The GIS, we still have a little bit of work to do with it, but we've moved away from having an outside company running it to doing it completely in-house. We're working with the City of Marion, going to move over to their server, and the two of us are going to start working together, like, developing to be able to put on there some of their information as well. So, instead of having two, because they had considered making their own site, because they didn't like ours, but now, we're going to combine the two, so they'll have all of their information. So, the GIS and the DMV would probably be my two, two things.
That's good. And I would, I was going to highlight the fact that the DMV, we all initially had received a lot of complaints. I have little to no complaints now about how efficiently the DMV is running, so our board appreciates that, and we take note of that. And second thing I would say, in regard to the GIS, we need you to reach out to the Board of Realtors, because I've had, now theirs, I've had several comments in, from that group, so Mary Jane Boyd is the person you need to call, and give her a call tomorrow, and reach out to her, and...
I have left a message with her, telling her, anytime she wanted to come talk to me.
Good.
Feel free.
Good.
And I haven't heard anything back from her.
Well, I'll make sure she calls you tomorrow. How's that?
I'll work.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
I would, I'll make a comment about DMV. Couple of years ago, I was getting a lot of complaints sent... of complaints. And I got in a habit of every time I'd come through the door, I started counting heads, just to see how many is lined up. And actually, there would be quite a few lined up. But now when I come in, you know, it's, you count them on your hand most of the time. So it is definitely going much better up there.
Big change.
Going excellent, I, I think.
And in regard.
Doing a good job on that.
Sorry.
Appreciate it.
In regard to DMV, we had, the business sector, we're taking business across the mountain into Burke County. Give the board an update on how that's changed and who, what big users have we picked up that we didn't have before?
The, since Tom Johnson's was one, they've, they've not fully come back, but they have started bringing some.
Good.
But the big one is the Marion Jeep Chrysler. They've been bringing all of their work over to us.
Great, great.
They'll, they'll come bring 10, 15 titles at once. And that's about every day, every two days.
Great. Well, good. Let's keep, let's stay focused in, in regard to trying to get all of the business within the county. It's a great thing. Okay? Any other questions before we take action? Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
I would make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Phillips for four more years.
Chad, you got a motion? You have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those who prepare the motion say aye. Aye, and you pose like sign. What that equals is a five-o vote. And that shows the board's behind you. So keep up your good work, okay? Thank you, Chad.
Appreciate y'all.
Yes, sir. Have a good evening. Okay, this time let's move to part, excuse me, old business, item B, the Part F Greenway phase update. And Ashley's got some good news for us.
Yes, sir. You may remember that way back in January, we submitted a grant application to the, to the state. It's the, in Part F stands for Parks and Recreation Trust Fund. We submitted that application for the second time. The first year we were turned down. And essentially, we were told when we applied the year before that, that we were asking for too much money. There just wasn't as much in the fund as there used to be. So what we did is we met with the partners, Trails Association and others, and scaled down the project greatly, actually. And where before, we had a, a bridge and numerous properties we were across, excuse me, we scaled it down to just the, the County River Park property and greatly reduced the scale and cost of the project. We had submitted an application for a little over $500,000 back in January with 250,000 of that being Part F funds. And we waited and waited and waited and waited some more. And finally, the board met, I believe back in July, and put off the decision a little bit longer. But eventually, they did meet and we were awarded the grant. And I have the governor's letter in your packet. And they sent the contract a few days ago for us to review and to hopefully approve so we can get underway with the actual design and the more concrete planning. So I guess the first action, if you're okay with it, is to approve the contract that is enclosed. And then I can, excuse me, I can move forward with some other updates. But are there any questions about the award, the budget, anything like that?
Now, this $250,000 that we had to come up with to meet the 500,000, did you say the city was doing 125,000 of our portion of that? Did I hear you wrong? Oh, okay, I didn't know.
I don't know that I said, but we have plugged in a number with the city and we had some discussions with them. We need to finalize that figure at the next utility committee before we move forward with it. But that would be a good goal.
Okay, any other comments, questions, and we'll proceed on with this segment of that.
Got a timeframe?
Not really at this point. I know when the city did Phase Two, which ended at the McDowell House, it took them two or three years to get that project completed after the award. This is a little bit of a different situation since it is on county property. And there's already some improvements that have been made there. So it's not virgin land. But, you know, there will take time to design and that sort of thing, permitting. So probably two years would be a good estimate.
Remind me, what was the amount that we contributed as a county on Phase Two of the city's Greenway? Dollar amount?
I have to look to the audience on that. I believe we did 60,000.
60,000.
On that one. I'd have to double check.
And also, I think there were some donations of land involved on top of that.
Right.
Or the ability to use our land.
Right. It is on county property.
Okay.
Nice.
You brought up, you brought up a little bargain.
There's nothing to do tonight until we told them.
Chairman Walker did bring up a little bargaining point because once it moves on from the Tom Johnson's side, it would fall more on us and the city wouldn't be quite as involved. Is that correct?
Right.
So there may be a little bargaining there where we can work with them a little bit. You know, because 60,000 plus a little bit of land, maybe they step up a little more this phase because then we pick up from, you know, it'll pick up from Tom Johnson's way into over.
That's what good partners do. There's a good little give and take sometimes, right?
I think a little, little communication there with them.
Commissioner Hallfield, note all this for our meeting with the city officials next time our utility committee meets.
Sure will. When are we meeting?
Uh, January.
December.
We're not having this anyway.
Okay. Now, Ashley, what are you requesting the board to do now?
We would ask that you approve the contract. And as far as any decision on the local match, city, MTA, anybody else, that can be decided at a later date because all they care about is that somebody, the county is matching it. And they allow us to figure out how to make that match.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion that we approve the contract between the county and the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources.
Okay, you got a motion? You have a second?
I'll see for further discussion if anybody has.
Okay.
I see some blank.
Further discussion.
Seen some wandering minds there.
Okay, we are in discussion phase now. Any comments by board members?
I read in the memo here from the December 4th says that if we did not do this contract within 45 days, we would lose the funding. Is that correct?
That is.
Put us in the January.
The thing is, when we, when we vote to accept this contract tonight, we're, we're accepting full responsibility for the remainder of that expense, whether anybody helps us out or not.
What's the next utility date?
Be before the end of the year. Be the 21st of January after.
After the fact, so if we have days right.
But it's standard.
No, four, five days put us in February.
Commissioner Brown's brought up a good point. But standard, how, how we operate it to date would be, we go ahead, city or county, the cost on what our match is, we approve it, and then we start bargaining from there on who's going to make up the match. So the board's committed to the project, right? And we've done voted to do it.
Yeah.
So we're sort of, Commissioner Brown raised out a very good point, but in the end, we're, we are tied to it.
I want to secure the 250.
And you brought out a good point, too, that the, the money does go away.
It does.
At a certain time. That's why this board's so good. You, you guys have different viewpoints and you bring out different things. And therefore, we make good decisions.
Well, I second the motion that we move on with.
Okay?
Oh, you are going.
All right, all those who prepare the motion say aye. Aye, you pose like sign. Okay, thank you, Jim. Mr. Wheaton?
I did want to mention, we've been talking with the McDowell Trails Association. Just to give a recap on where we stand as far as easements for future phases, four, five, six, seven, eight, what have you. When we had the initial thoughts of Phase Three, we had wanted to go from Tom Johnson's, at least to the county property and maybe beyond. Due to the cost of the bridge and different things, it just wasn't feasible. But we did get the easements for most of the property west of the river, including Tom Johnson and a few others. So those are in hand for the most part. Between Phase One, that the city primarily constructed, and what will be Phase Three, there are a couple of property owner gaps. So right now, looking to the future, this isn't right away, but trying to get those secured. MTA is speaking with those property owners. And we're hopeful now that this is, looks like it's going to happen, we'll get a little more commitment from them. One of those is adjacent to the property, the county property, is Dr. Woody. He is a former resident of McDowell County many years ago. He's lived in California for probably five or six decades, but his family has ties here. And he actually donated the County River Park property to the county 20 some odd years ago. We have been talking with Dr. Woody, or MTA has, and the county, but he has indicated a willingness to sign the easement documents within the next couple of weeks, now that he knows that we have the grant funding for Phase Three on the county property. He did have some conditions in there, and we thought we, they would be handled pretty easily. He just wanted to have access to the river, just like anybody else would. And he mentioned that he wanted to be able to put in maybe a boat dock. And that's not something we would regulate. That would be something the state or federal government would do, but we wouldn't stand in the way of it happening. So I think he's willing to sign that very soon. And that would leave maybe one or two property owners between Phase Three and Phase One. So we're getting closer to at least getting those signed. So when future funding comes down, we'll have that already taken care of. And one possibility with the Woody property, it is a small tract of land. If we do have that easement secured, and you rarely have extra money left over with these projects, but if there was enough money to maybe do some of the grading, if we have the easement, if we could do the grading and maybe a rough end of a trail, we would try to do that, too, just to make it a little more accessible. But we'll continue to keep you updated on the progress of this grant, of course, and bring back any information that you would like to see.
Okay, thank you, Ashley. Let's move to our next item on our appointment schedule. This is item D. And at this time, I will go ahead and declare the board in a public hearing setting pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-7 for economic development. But we've taken that off the table, right?
Right.
So we don't need to do that.
We don't, we don't need to. There's been a slight change, slight change of plan.
Well, good. Okay, Ashley, go ahead and lead us out then.
Yes, sir. We had advertised for a public hearing and for economic development. And sometimes you prepare in advance and turns out you don't need to do that. I spoke with Mr. Abernathy today, who is here. And he advised that we don't need to do the hearing. He would be here tonight with the, the business owner, Mr. Parks. And essentially, what we would hear tonight is an update on what we've been calling Project Homecoming was the code name. But we would hear an update from Mr. Parks and some of the plans that he has for relocating some business here to the county. It's very positive news for the county and for Mr. Parks. And we're just glad, I guess it's an early Christmas present for us. But Chuck, did you want to come forward and maybe introduce Mr. Parks?
Introduce his assistant, Mr. Chair.
That's.
Who he is.
Mr. Abernathy, if you don't mind, for the purpose of the audience watching tonight's broadcast, could you state who you are?
Chuck Abernathy, it is great to be back in here. Good to, good to see all of you. And again, I appreciate the good work that the, that the board does. This is my first venture back into the room since, since leaving. It looks like staff is doing, doing a very thorough job. And I know you guys are, are doing, are doing well. Yeah, the economic development, that's the position that I have now. We've been working with a company owned by Mr. Parks for between two to three months' time. The company is located in Virginia. Mr. Parks is president and is going to tell you more about his operation. I think you're going to enjoy the detail because sometimes we do these things or you do these things, and there's, there's a lacking of, of detail because there's still a process underway. And I think tonight, you're going to hear, you're going to hear a, a lot of detail. His business is a metalworking business, again, out of, out of Virginia. Steve Parks is, is from McDowell County, class of 1978, which is why we codenamed it Project Homecoming. The project was competitive with the upstate of South Carolina. The company would employ 25 people at wages that are super, wages that exceed our average manufacturing wage. It's really what we're, what we're wanting and what, really what we're all about. Steve told me this morning that the incentive would not be necessary, that he has made his decision and his decision was to locate here. And that is certainly appreciated. What that does, our standard practice is $3,000 a job. So the very first communication we had was 75,000 over three years, which is, again, just very standard for us. And his comment was that he would be locating here and that that would not be, would not be necessary. So that's, that's very welcome. He's going to discuss his company, his product, his timetable, his location. All of that will be, will be given to you. The one comment, if I, it's not a deviation, but, and Steve can elaborate on this from his perspective, but if you don't mind, real quickly, let me give you mine on what happened the first time that we met in the Universal Building. All of you, I wish all of you could have seen what happened because it was exactly what that building was designed to do. We met Steve in the Economic Development Office. We toured the facility. We met with the machining instructor. There were students in the machining area that he, he and his two engineers were able to converse with. Huge part of why this is, is happening. Then met with the welder, welding instructor, Jamie. I don't think there were students, actually, there may have been a, there were some. But he had that conversation with the, with the welding instructor as well. And it, it was really what everybody had in mind as far as how that building would function and the interaction of the company and the impression that the building, the instructors, and the students make. And it was just outstanding. So with that, there's no action for you to take. But with that, I'll introduce Steve Parks.
Thank you, Chuck. Even though we had made this decision, I want to give you a little bit of background first on myself. As Chuck said, I'm from here. My mother taught school here for years and years and years at West. And I left here in 78 and it was to go to the Naval Academy and attended the Naval Academy, graduated, and served another 21 years as a commissioned officer in the Navy. So when I retired in 2003, we had been doing some work with some of the research agencies in the Navy and in the federal government. So we started a small company and it was based out of Fairfax, Virginia. We since moved it to Fredericksburg. And over time, that company has developed into an engineering research and development company with a manufacturing capability. So if I could say in just one sentence what we do, we have a particular expertise. I'm a, I'm a mechanical engineer. We have engineers on staff. The labor pool that we would be hiring from are engineers The labor pool that we would be hiring from are engineers, we'll need more of them, but mainly welders and machinists. Okay? And we use them, we have particular expertise in the field of blast engineering. And we do the effects of blast on structures, on vehicles, and on humans. And we work with other companies and with federal agencies to develop solutions to those challenges. And right now, our biggest customers are the Army. We work for the Corps of Engineers. And the, the forcing function that caused us to come to this decision, Chuck had, had put together a really nice incentive package, and we were very impressed with that. We were in a tight competition between McDowell County and Greer and Greenville. Greer actually is in Spartanburg County. So we were looking between Spartanburg and Greenville and here. And Greenville and Spartanburg, they're a bigger, you know, obviously, you know, a bigger area, and they weren't moving as quickly as Chuck. Chuck put this together very quickly for us. We were very impressed. But we were gonna let this play out. We were gonna fully evaluate this until one of our contracts, which we were in negotiations with the Government of Australia, came through last week. And we really have to get started. So that was a forcing function that said, we need to make a decision, and we need to do it now. And since we didn't have the complete package from upstate, we knew what they were gonna offer us, but we hadn't had a offer. We made a decision, this is where we want to come. So that's the reason why we don't think incentive packages is necessary at this point. So there were other business factors in play that forced the decision for us a little bit early. But that's fine. Working with Chuck, and he was right, when we saw the Universal Building, I was particularly impressed with the training program. And I would have to say, that is probably the number-one factor that kind of pushed me over the edge, because they're training the exact people that we will be hiring. And in fact, as we went through the machining facility, they're using the exact machines we use. So when it comes to programmers, CNC programmers, it's important what machine that they've learned on, and they happen to be using the same types of machines. So, so we were very happy with that. But back to what we do. What we will be doing here is executing those contracts that I just mentioned. We're not moving here, we've been in business since 2003. We're not moving here as a startup, looking to, you know, oh, we've got to do something in three months, or we're gonna crash and burn. We are bringing contracts with us that we're gonna execute in this facility. And we're looking at the Old Marion Manufacturing Plant, which is really perfect for what we want to do. Our manufacturing's a little bit heavy. It's heavy plate welding, heavy structural welding. We have patents on particular technology that is used by laboratories to simulate the effects of a blast. It doesn't use explosives, but it's a simulation. It either uses compressed gas, or it uses a flammable gas. But we build simulation equipment, and we need a place to do that. And the projects that we have caused us to outgrow our facility in Northern Virginia, and we were looking to expand, and we didn't want to do it there. Okay? Because the environment for a small business like mine is not particularly good in Northern Virginia, contrary to what you may have heard about that. I mean, it's a lot of business up there, but it's not very friendly for small business. Having dealt with some of the people here in the city and in the county leading up to our decision, I've found that we've got a lot of support for what we want to do, and particularly with Chuck. And we just made the decision to come here. So that's what we're gonna be doing. What we'll have, have in place is initially a welding facility, heavy plate, structural manufacturing of the particular devices that we build, which are blast load simulators. We also manufacture some products for a company in Canada, which are blast-rated components of an inflatable shelter system that they manufacture for the oil industry. So we'll be making some of that here. But when we were looking for a place to expand, we knew it wasn't Northern Virginia, and we're confident this is gonna work out well for us. So, and I just thought I would come, even though we'd made this decision, I would come to the meeting in case you may have any questions about what led us to this point, or what we're planning to do here.
Mr. Parks, I would like to say, to lead off, that we're so glad Project Homecoming has, has come to McDowell County. What you're doing, we've got people that, that are trained and certified and ready to go. So we're so excited you're here, and McDowell County will welcome you. Anything we need, you need, Chuck, has, I'm sure, been very beneficial to you. And we're here for you too. This board stands with our small businesses.
Senior Marion has been very helpful.
Good.
Yeah, this is, this is really gonna be a good fit, I think. Yep. Okay? So no other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thanks for being here.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christi. Okay, gentlemen, this time let's move to Item C under Old Business, and this is Board Appointments. Mr. Wood can go right ahead, certainly it's out.
Sure, we have two board appointment items. If you remember, last month, we had an application for the Adult Care and Nursing Home Advisory Committees. And we've advertised that and not received any additional applications. And that is traditionally a pair of committees that we have a hard time finding applicants for. So we'd ask if you would please appoint Mr. Crosby. They would be very happy to have him aboard, I believe. And his application, I did copy from last month.
And this is a second reading?
Yes, sir.
One question, Ashley, I had a member of that Nursing Home Advisory Committee comment that there's probably seven or eight people on that committee, and probably two active actually go out. And he was asking the question, what, what is the process if someone is not active, and we appoint them?
Right.
Does, does that nursing home committee have rules that govern how you would remove somebody who's not going out at all? This question he asked, we need to forward to you.
Traditionally, a lot of the boards that you appoint to govern their own, you know, a lot of them have bylaws for governing their appointments. I don't know that there's any mechanism that you have to remove folks that don't attend, but it's something that we'll look into.
If you could forward that to whomever, and just let them know that board members, current board members are concerned about the lack of involvement by other board members, they're not going out at all.
Right.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? This is a second reading concerning Mr. Walter Crosby.
With the question, we approve the request appointment, Mr. Walter Crosby, to the Adult Care Nursing Home Advisory Committee.
Second discussion. All those are fair to the most, say aye. Aye, you pose like sign. Okay? Let's move to the next one here.
We did have one other item. Mr. Kaler stopped in a couple of days ago and gave us a copy of a resignation letter for the McDowell Tech Board of Trustees. Did, just in case they didn't receive it as well, I did contact the community college to let him know we had received the letter. That seat is a board appointment. So if you could give us direction on if you'd like us to do what we will there, we'd appreciate it.
Mr. Kaler had contacted me about this, and he, he expressed a desire that I would go on that board. And I said, well, I said, whatever I do to help, I don't mind if you have to do it. So he did contact me and, and make that request.
He did. Mr. Kaler also made contact with me, and we discussed this quite a while on who he felt like would be best person suited to take his place. And he recommended you.
Sure. Okay. Gentlemen, we have a first and a second reading. What's the pleasure of the board, since we're talking about, we've got Molly here about, here about two committees she has, and she has a need for it to have commissioners on Do we just need to waive the first and second reading? No need to go through that, since we, we would be appointing one of our own members? What's comments?
I'll make a motion, we waive the first reading.
Yeah, I second that.
Okay, second discussion. All those are fair to the most, say aye. Aye, you pose like sign. Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this time, gentlemen.
Okay, we're, okay, I'll make a motion that Chairman David Walker finishes out the term of Mr. Kaler on McDowell Tech board.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those are fair to the most, say aye. Aye, you pose like sign. Okay, Molly, you're here, and you have two items or two different boards, so if you don't mind, come forward, and we welcome you to the boardroom tonight, and if you can go ahead and explain to the board sort of what committees you've got there. And Molly, and Molly has made a request for two commissioners, and I'll let you go ahead and continue on, Molly. Okay?
Okay. In extension, we use advisory councils to develop our educational programs. It helps us, in the use of advisory councils, it helps us to be relevant and focused. They're really a part of our grass, grassroots organizations. So we really rely on our advisory council to be our eyes and ears in the community, come back to us, and tell us what programs we need to be doing. In addition to that, they can provide some linkage to some outside agencies that might help us to do our work. They also help us to market our programs, and sharing our stories with others to let people know what we're all about. On our advisory council, we try and get a diverse group of individuals. We try and get from all walks of life. We include users as well as non-users. Cheryl turned the phrase once, non-people, so we've used that. They're non-people. But we really, we really rely on that to help us to develop our programs. We have an overall advisory leadership council, as well as specialized committees. And specialized committees, we use for different program areas, or for specific program areas. And right now, I am in the process of putting together a local food advisory council to help us develop McDowell County's local food system. And right now, we've already done a little bit of prep work with the development of some of the goals for developing a local food system here in McDowell County. But that advisory council is gonna have input in really defining what those goals are gonna be, and in actually being the boots on the ground and making, really developing our, our local food system. So it's really exciting to, to have that get, get started, and we were looking to have a commissioner join us on that. Like I said, it's a diverse group of people, it's a network of different organizations, and that's what we really need in order to support our local food system.
Okay, Molly, so you've got two, two separate boards?
Right. And, and we also have what we call our advisory leadership council, and that oversees the total extension program in McDowell County. And we draw from all of our program areas to be on that council, as well as our non-users, people possibly that should be using our programs that, that aren't using our program. So we use that as an overall extension advisory committee.
So the two committees, just for our records, one is the advisory leadership council?
Right.
Now, that committee, you had stated in communication to the county manager that several of your people had requested Commissioner Brown to be on?
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
And then the other, what's the name of the other committee?
It's the Local Food Advisory Council.
And, and that had been requested to have Commissioner Hollifield, correct? Cause he's a grower.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, both of those should be put on the board. Second.
Okay, discussion, all those are fair to the most, say aye. Aye. Okay, gentlemen, you've got a new committee.
Are you, are you looking at any of this, anybody from school board also?
Yes.
It's not concerned us, but I just wanted to know.
Yes, we are. We have a few people from McDowell County schools that are, we're gonna request to be on it.
Molly, while we're here, why don't you go ahead and give the extension update?
All right.
How's that?
I do want to thank you for giving me this time to, to come and not only ask for commissioners to be on our, our, our boards, but also, I wanted to share with you just some of the highlights from this past year. It is the end of the year, and we kind of, it's a good time to reflect on what we've done and, and some of our successes. Most of you know, most of our cattle operations are part-time, and they use their cattle operations as supplemental income. But this supplemental income is really important to their families. In fact, one cattle producer just recently told me that his cattle operation sent his two children to college. And those, both of those children, both of those children came back to McDowell County with college degrees, and they're now productive members of our community. And I think that says a lot.
What college did he go to?
I don't know.
Everybody knows he's a state student.
He was only to ask the question, but he's laying back, so I thought I'd ask him.
No, I'm, I'm not really for sure, but...
Mine's gonna send mine, mine to Harvard.
But anyhow, with that being said, I think all farmers have dreams, just as you and I do. They want to be able to send their kids to school. They want to be able to buy their daughters a wedding dress. And so one of our main objectives in extension is how do we make these operations more profitable? How can they continue to do what they do? And so our cattle producers were looking for ways to boost profits through value-add and marketing. Greg Anderson, who's our Agriculture and Natural Resources Extension Agent, provided the resources for cattle producers to co-mingle their cattle through the Mountain Cattle Alliance. These cattle are verified as, as high quality and command a higher price. So in 2015, eight McDowell producers sold 120 head, and this was about over four loads of cattle. And that was equal to about $33,000 additional dollars that, that these gentlemen attained by doing this program. In addition to the work with the cattle producer, Greg has an active junior and senior livestock judging team. Throughout this past year, they competed at state competitions, they competed out, out-of-state competition, as well as regional competitions. And all those competition individuals received top honors. They were first. And then at the North Carolina State Livestock Judging Contest in Raleigh, the junior team was crowned state champions. And so they're really representing McDowell County well. And I can probably tell you, if you guys been to any type of competition, people know who the main competitors are, and they're talking about McDowell County. I, I can just imagine that.
Molly, we want that group to be brought in to our boardroom.
Okay.
If you could work that out with Ashley and staff, so we recognize them.
All right, we can do that. And in, in addition to that, these kids are learning valuable life skills. They're learning critical thinking. Something I tell my kid all the time, use your noggin. With these kids, they're using their noggin. When they evaluate the livestock, they have to really think about that. But not only, once they, they are evaluated, they have to back that up with reasons, and they have to communicate those reasons. So they're learning in addition how to communicate, and that's one thing as well. Some kids don't always use their noggin, but we're really losing our communication tools. I mean, we're communicating more with email and text, and these kids are, are learning how to communicate. So I, I think that's, that's a really positive program that we have in extension, and I, I look forward to, to more success and sharing more success with that. I work a lot with vegetable producers, small-scale vegetable producers. And one of the top issues of today's age is ensuring food safety. Farmers want to provide a safe product, buyers want to have a safe product, consumers want to have a safe product. And this is all driven by the market, as well as regulatory agencies. Just today, just recently, I was on a conference call talking about the Food Safety Modernization Act. And that's gonna change a lot of the way that things are done. So it's, it's, it's an exciting time for us, because, you know, we are going to be able to be more proactive in having a safe food, food product instead of a reactive. But we have been providing workshops, and they're called Good Agricultural Practices. And they talk about all the steps necessary in food production, about how to... And they talk about all the steps necessary in food production about how to minimize food safety risk. And I offered a program last winter to a group of producers. One farmer left and this spring, they installed drip irrigation in their fields. And that's because water is a source of microbial hazards. And so with drip irrigation, they're able to put water on the, on the roots, you know, where the plant needs it as opposed to on the fruit or on the plant. So they took basically a step to ensure that they're going to have a safer food product when they do sell it at market. And not only did it, is it good for food safety, but I don't know if you remember this summer, what were we in lack of? Rain.
Oh, yeah.
Right. This fall, it's been a different story. But, so it really came at a good time, you know? So he has now some drip irrigation and it is really a more efficient way to water crops as well. For our 4H youth development, we had 139 youth enrolled in five clubs and specific program areas. They too competed at local, district, state and national competitions. We continue to work with McDowell County Schools with our school enrichment, like embryology. We have our 4H Safety Field Day and our Agriculture Awareness Field Day. And as you guys know, we had a youth participate at the North Carolina County Commissioners Association Youth Summit in Greenville. And I know that individual took a lot away from that experience. So we thank you for hosting youth at your annual meeting. The expanded food nutrition education program continued to grow this year. FNEP is a federal program, teaches nutrition to both youth and adults, focusing on healthy eating and active living. Heather Peak, who is our FNEP Program Assistant, taught around 900 children in five different elementary schools this year. So she made a big impact. She also taught 30 different adults through the Lunch Bunch and it's a Head Start Program called Circle of Parents. Shows she's making an impact with both the youth and adult program area. And these are limited resource audience. So I'm really happy with the results that she's had. They actually, for the FNEP Program, they do a pre and post evaluation and those, that data is sent into Raleigh and she gets those back and those results really have been outstanding. We see changed behavior, changed attitudes with those results. So that's really, it's just a brief tidbit of some of the highlights that I wanted to share with you tonight. Do you guys have any questions?
No, that's such a great program. Teaching kids to get outside, get up and do games, learn.
Right.
Commissioners, we've been going to your awards banquet where the kids do clubs and what, they do the project books and the, when my girls get on there, they're going to be involved.
Good.
I want my girl.
We want to have them.
And learning skills that'll help them.
Exactly, right.
Teach them life skills.
Right. That's exactly right. Our youth programs are focused on life skills and teaching life skills. We want them to be productive members of society. We want them to take your place, Mr. Chairman, one of these days.
Yeah. I just want to see him milk the cows.
Well, I'm excited about being on the committee and I appreciate.
All right, well, all right. Well, we appreciate you joining us and helping us to develop our programs. Advisory councils are really crucial to what we do and how we develop our programs.
Thank you very much.
Well, I would say that it's going to be a pleasure for me to serve on your food committee and all that and I really look forward to that.
Yeah, we're looking forward to.
But I'm one of those folks that have to get an email every month or I'll forget.
Okay. I'll remember that.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Molly, thank you so much for being here tonight. Have a good evening. Okay, gentlemen, let's move to our next item. We're down to item A in the new business, the tier rankings came out. Mr. Wood, can you go right ahead, sir?
Sure. And Mr. Conley did a very good job in the newspaper of discussing this recent change and I will do so tonight for you guys. In North Carolina, all 100 counties are grouped into three tiers. And essentially what the state does, they have four different criteria that they look at to evaluate each county. And it's unemployment rate, median household income, percentage growth in population and adjusted property tax base per capita. And so they compare all 100 counties with those different factors. And then at the end of every two years, they do that grouping. And since the state has been doing this ranking, McDowell County has been either a tier one or a tier two county. And for the last two years, McDowell has been a tier two. We were notified about a week or two ago that for 2016 and 2017, we would go back to a tier one county. They went on to explain that our economic situation hadn't essentially changed that much in the past couple of years. And we're actually number 44 in the state as far as our economic picture. But they have a couple of factors that automatically place us in a tier one due to our population and other factors. I know in the newspaper, Mr. Abernathy and Mr. Boyett of the city mentioned, you know, some of the factors that we've seen lately, positives. We've seen increased retail sales. We've seen commercial development. We've seen some industrial recruitment successes. So there's a lot of positive things that are happening. And a lot of times, those don't always translate right away in these tier ranking changes. So this isn't something to be upset about, depressed about, that sort of thing, but it's just a fact of life. On the other hand, we can look at it as a positive. Again, it's a little bit of a hit in the pride to go back to tier one. However, being a tier one county, we're eligible for increased grant funding from the state. There are reimbursements that we receive for the state for different things, as wide-ranging as spay and neuter vouchers and others that since we're tier one, we'll get additional funding. So those are the positive things you look at. And also, it's a way to challenge us to continue to improve our economy. So again, not terrible news. We've gone back and forth over the last five or 10 years, but do want to make sure you have the information and if you had any questions, I'll be.
Would it be safe to say it was basically a four-county swap?
Right.
From say 38 to number 42? And we wound up 39, 38 was.
Right. We're right, right at that threshold of between tier one and tier two. And a lot of counties, you'll see that as you go through the different tier rankings. There are several that are right on that line. They may go from a tier two to a tier three and back like we've done one and two. So the state, when they called to let me know the letter was coming, you know, they were very, you know, upbeat about it and they said, you know, we hate that's happening, but they played up the positives out of it more so than probably I did. But again, we'll look at the different grant funding options as a positive and it'll help pay for water lines and that sort of thing. So again, I take it for what it's worth, but it is a little bit of a challenge to us to.
So and two, would it be safe to say that we have so much land, Forest Service land and that sort of hurts us with the, in that?
That does hurt us with the tax base. And the other counties in the West that have a large percentage like we do are negatively affected because of that and.
Well, with us having, what, out of 100 counties in North Carolina, we've got the, we're number 20 in our unemployment rate with 80 being worse than us. And you mentioned too, the, we're 44th in the state on the.
Economic scale.
Economic scale. So it's not as bad as it seems and.
I look at it as an opportunity, let's just go for the grant money and get it for the county.
Yeah. And then next two years from now, let's move back to a tier two.
Yeah, we'll do our best.
All right. Okay. Any other comments, questions? There being none, no action, these will be taking us to go to tax matters, item B under new business. Gentlemen, you've got these, you've seen them. Any comments or questions for staff?
You do have several more, I believe there are five requests from the elderly folks that are requesting the elderly exemptions. So we would ask that you approve those as well. And again, these are ones that had missed a mail or didn't understand the letters they had received, that sort of thing, that we've double-checked that they are eligible.
Okay, gentlemen, comments, questions? There being none, what's pleasure to the board?
Make a motion, we approve the elderly exemptions, also tax releases and refunds.
Okay. There are second?
Yes.
Discussion? All those who favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, light sign?
There are daily reports coming up.
Okay. Let's move to the next item on our agenda. That would be item C under new business, the jury commission compensation. Mr. Wood, can you go right ahead, sir?
Again, this is a fairly routine item. We could have done it earlier in the meeting, but in North Carolina, the statutes require the Board of Commissioners to authorize payment for the jury commission, which apart from that, you have very little interaction with the court system and specifically juries. But it's probably something very antiquated from years back. But again, you have a letter from Clerk Melissa Adams. She's requesting that you approve the compensation of $350 for the jury commissioners listed for their service. And again, they go through the roles, helping to select jury members. I'm sure it's very tedious work and $350 is probably well-earned.
She's already budgeted that.
It is budgeted in the county budget.
Okay, what's pleasure to the board?
Most approved request for $350 for jury commission.
Second.
Discussion? All those who favor the motion, say aye. Aye, opposed, light sign. Okay, at this time, we've, we've got everything completed on our agenda except our item F under appointments. This is since the comment. And so moving forward, I see no one has signed up to comment. So let's go to reports, communications. Does any commissioner, staff have anything under reports, communications that we all need to know, anything from anybody?
I've got a question. Do we, this thing that come up here a while back with the planning board in Old Ford about the controversial thing about the problems they're having up there? Do we have any update on that or anything?
We have met at the staff level, I have met with the staff here to learn more about the issues that have been going on there. We've not received any official communication from the town that they have any issue with any of our enforcement of the floodplain ordinances there. And, but we will follow back up with the mayor to make sure that there are no issues with floodplain enforcement or any other ordinance enforcement for that matter.
I bring this up because, you know, this is something that affects the whole board. You know, there were some threats made to the board or to me and as one of the board members on this, I think it, it's me to bring it, bring it up.
So it's safe to say, Ashley, that staff, you've talked to staff and staff has again reviewed the information and the gentleman in question in Old Ford is not in violation, correct?
That's right.
So the person in the community who is saying that he is in violation, unless he has specific facts to bring to county staff, he's saying something that's just based upon facts is not true.
Right.
Per se.
Is it inside the town limits?
It is.
Gentlemen.
Well, he, he is saying that this is a county matter. What?
Well.
Our staff.
They contract with building inspection.
Right. We enforce their orders.
So it sounds like it's taken care of then. So he's, the gentleman just needs, if this gentleman has any more comment or question, any commissioners directing the staff and say, look, they've examined it and unless you've got any other information to present, the problem's resolved and it stands.
And we have, I have reached out to the individual in question and not heard back.
Good. So you tried to contact him too.
I just want the, I want the, you know, the municipality, the city of Old Ford as well as the citizens of this county, the taxpayers of this county to know that we have done everything we can do on our behalf to resolve this problem. And if the problem still exists, then it's something that the city of Old Ford will have to, you know, take up with the state. You know, we've done what we can do as far as the county.
And as commissioners, you know, guys, you all have somebody at different times will come up to you in the public and just say, hey, look, what's going on or have question? And if there's ever a time that, our role is to take the, receive the request, forward it to the staff and let staff handle it. And Ashley and his staff will go ahead and look at it, review it, and then they'll either call, you would call the individual back that we would refer to you and give them the answer and then we've done our part.
Right.
That's all we can do. Okay? Any other communications reports? County Christmas party went good. We appreciate the staff, the work they did getting decorated, set up. And big thanks to all of the county staff who did show up and the retirees. Very, very good night. At this time, as you all know, it is Christmas too, what, we in halfway at this point? So we want to go ahead and as a board, extend personal Christmas best wishes to everybody out there and who would be watching this via internet or cable. But before we do that though, I've asked Commissioner Peters, Vice Chairman Peters to read the Christmas story. It's very important to understand where we came from and, so Mr. Peters, go ahead and read this.
Gentlemen, with that, I'd just like to comment too about the manger scene on courthouse alone, how many comments we've heard. Last week, my son, my wife, family was walking through and they made a specific, not just them, but the people they were walking with specifically went to have their pictures made with the manger scene. I want to say I appreciate the stance that we took on having that place there, the people that helped sponsor and pay. And it means something when you drive through a town and you get to see, you know, the manger scene or whether it be, you know, live nativity scene, you know, somewhere. It's very important and just like you said, why we really truly celebrate Christmas. It's the birth of Christ. And Luke 2, it says, and it came to pass in those days that there went out a decree from Caesar Augustus that all the world should be taxed. And this taxing was first made when Serenius was governor of Syria. And all went to be taxed, everyone into his own city. And Joseph also went up out of Galilee, out of the city of Nazareth unto Judea, to the city of David, which is called Bethlehem, because, because he was of the house and lineage of David. To be taxed with Mary, his espoused wife, being great with child. And so it was that while they were there, the days were accomplished that she should be delivered. And she shall bring forth her firstborn son and wrap him in swaddling clothes and laid him in a manger, because there was no room for them in the end. And there were in the same country shepherds abiding in the field, keeping watch over their flock by night. And lo, the angel of the Lord came upon them, and the glory of the Lord shone round about them, and they were sore afraid. And the angels said unto them, fear not, for behold, I bring you good tidings of great joy, which shall be to all people. For unto you is born this day in the city of David, a Savior, which is Christ the Lord. And this shall be a sign unto you, you shall find the babe wrapped in swaddling clothes, lying in a manger. And suddenly, there was with the angel a multitude of the heavenly host praising God and saying, glory to God in the highest, and on earth, peace, goodwill toward men. And it came to pass, as the angels were gone away from them into heaven, the shepherds said one to another, let us now go even unto Bethlehem and see this thing which has come to pass, which the Lord hath made known unto us. And they came with haste and found Mary and Joseph and the babe lying in a manger. And when they had seen it, they made known abroad the saying which was told them concerning this child. And all they that heard it wondered at these things, which were told them by the shepherds. But Mary kept all things and pondered them in her heart. And the shepherds returned glorifying and praising God for all the things that they had heard and seen, as it was told unto them. as it was told unto them. And when eight days were accomplished for the circumcision of the child, his name was called Jesus, which is so named of the angel before he was conceived in the womb."
Thank you. Mr. Peters, Commissioner Hollifield, sir, go ahead and take out.
Okay. Now, anytime we do this, you always have to get in the proper attire. Now, did you wonder why that was laying over here?
I brought it especially for this, okay?
Did you bring your hat?
No.
You have to have the proper hat. Okay. Basically, from all the Hollifield family, I'd like to wish all the McDowell County family a very merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year. But, you know, I'll take my hat off now, and I will be a little bit serious. Now, I'll ask the question. Everybody, why do we have Christmas, okay? Why do we celebrate Christmas? We celebrate Christmas for one reason. It's the celebration and honor of the Christ child, birth, and, you know, he was named Jesus. Now, if that had not happened, we would not be having this season right now. Now, I still call it Christmas. There's some folks might want to call it Happy Holidays, but I grew up, it was Christmas, and it will always remain Christmas with me. Now, the second part is something we'd like to be serious about, is that this is a period of giving and it's a period of receiving. We all know that it is better to give than to receive. So, in our giving during this Christmas season, let's all think about those out here that are less fortunate than us, than we are in our giving. And I pray that everyone listening to this will be blessed during the Christmas season.
Thank you, Mr. Hollifield. Mr. Brown?
I'd just like to say, certainly myself and my family, we wish everyone out there a very merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We wish that it would be in the hearts and minds of every person out there as well, to remember the birth of Jesus Christ, which Christmas represents. And so, as for myself and my family, Merry Christmas.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes, sir. I first off, I'd like to thank all the employees that'll be working on Christmas today and away from their families. We appreciate what you do for the citizens of this county. From the Crawford family of yours, we wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
And...
From the McPeters family, we just want to say Merry Christmas, and may God truly bless you and a Happy New Year.
And from the Walker family, Merry Christmas to everyone, and we hope you remember, as everybody said, the reason for the season. Thanks so much. There are here motion. We adjourn the meeting at this time?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those who favor the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Thank you.